May the 11th, 2021, meeting of the With County Board of Supervisors to order. This evening, we have reform county employee Pastor Jeremy Farley from Restoration Church provide our invocation. If you would stand or remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pastor Farley?
Father, Father, today we have time for our creation, there we go. In all respects, Father. I ask you tonight, how did I get Harvey or Scott or Christian get to do that? Lord, it is a thankless job to lead in public service, but God, I'm grateful that there are people willing to do that. I ask you, Father, that nothing would take place tonight that would not give you glory and honor. I pray, Father, that every person who gets up to speak, Father, that they will speak respectfully, and God, that they will be heard. Father, I ask you that whenever it's all said and done, and God, we leave this place, we will remember that we're neighbors, and God will leave this place remembering that there is a God in heaven who loves us so much that he gave us Jesus. Father, I pray that you bless every home that is represented in this room, bless every marriage that is represented in this room. And God, whenever all the politics are aside, and God, whenever a person goes home, Lord, may we remember that there will come a day when we will all stand before a thrice holy God. Thank you, Father, for loving us as you do. It is in Jesus' name that we pray. Amen.
Amen.
My Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
First item on the agenda is presentation of resolutions. Tonight, we have the George With High School Scholastic Bowl Team. Mr. Cook will present the resolutions, guys and girls and coaches, if you'll come on up.
The resolution honoring the George With High School Scholastic Bowl Team state championship. Whereas George With High School Scholastic Bowl Team competed and completed outstanding 2020-2021 season, and whereas George With High School Scholastic Bowl Team went undefeated in the Mountain Empire District and VHSL Region 1C Tournament, and whereas at the Virginia High School League Class 1 Tournament held on March 20th, 2021, the George With High School Scholastic Bowl Team emerged victorious, capturing the state championship title for the second consecutive year. And whereas team captain Joshua Tommyack scored top five leading scorers in the entire Commonwealth, earning him a position on the All-State Team. Now, therefore being resolved, let the With County Board of Supervisors officially commence the George With High School Scholastic Bowl Team comprised of Joshua Tommyack, Mason Mabry, Cade Minton, Colton Alley, Landon Ferguson, Natalie Snow, and Coach Jennifer Ferguson for the temporary season identification checkup towards the launch of the strike. And be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution should be incorporated in the official minutes of the With County Board of Supervisors adopted this 11th day of May, 2021. Signed, Ryan W. Vaught. Cheers. Make a motion when you accept this resolution.
Have a motion, have a second.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Always the favorite thing about saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations.
Passing right on down. There we go.
Before we move into citizens' time, Mr. Hankins, I think we have an introduction of the new employee, or Mr. Barrett?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. We do have a new employee around the complex on the suite. We had a former PIO here, we have our new PIO here as well. So I'd like to introduce you to Elizabeth Sweeney. She is a 2020 graduate of Virginia Tech. She actually will work tomorrow, she gets to go to Virginia Tech and walk in an official graduation ceremony, so if she wants to introduce herself and say hello, please welcome her to county service.
Welcome.
This is your first test. No pressure.
I am a major student, a student of the Michigan State. Again, starting my way from the university, major in marketing, minor in management, and I'm a student of the university. Today, I actually want to stay too on the job. So very excited, because if you guys do anything, or anybody needs to come to town, yet I'm here today, it's one of those, you know, something with anything, and I'll try to conquer it all.
And I know there's at least two members up here that would like you to mention that you're also a proud 2017 graduate of Fort Chiswell High School.
Yeah, there's certainly people on the board that I came to be my assistant. But I ended up at Fort Chiswell High School, graduated there in 2017, with the B.E. School Enrollment Program, and actually graduated the following day before. Um, so you can see what's my associate and sign, and then transfer to the tech. Congratulations.
Welcome aboard.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Thank you.
We're happy to have you.
All right, next item on the agenda, citizens' time. We've got one person signed up for citizens' time, Ms. Denise Davis.
This is just some information I gave you this last time. It's just a map on the localities of Virginia that fund more above the required local effort than With County, and those that don't also.
Excuse me, is that on? Because I can't hear a word anybody's saying off that.
I just turned it off.
Do I need to talk louder?
Apparently aren't picking up tonight, because I can't hear what's being pulled.
I'll use my teacher voice.
There you go.
Okay. In 2018, the With County Public Schools received 78% more than was required by the state for school operations from the Board of Supervisors, and With County's rank for education among the 135 localities in the state was 69. In 2019, With County Public Schools received 65% more than was required by the state for school operations, and With County's ranking among the localities went from 69 to 86. In 2020, With County Public Schools received 50% more than was required by the state for school operations, and the state ranking among localities fell to 102. Each year, for the past few years, this board has given less and less than was required by the state to fund our schools. Now granted, you are given more than the 45% that is required, but so is every other locality in Virginia, because we all know that no school can operate on a bare minimum and provide quality educational opportunities. But With County's in a downward trend in school funding, and it seems that With County will continue to fall in the rankings for 2021. 75% of the localities in Virginia provide more school funding than is required above the required local effort than With County. 75% localities provide more funding than is required than With County. With County is in the bottom 25% of localities that provide less funding than is required by the required local effort. I don't think that industries or medical professionals would want to think about locating in With County if they knew these statistics. For the past three years, With County has requested the same amount for school funding and has received it, but now you want to decrease that amount. Why? If 13.6 million is reduced at all, cuts will have to be made within the school system. It won't be you making those cuts, but it will be you requiring those cuts. The school board hasn't given you a wish list of what they want, they've given you the amount it will take to provide quality educational opportunities to With County students. They've given you the amount it will take to provide school employees with the salary increases they have worked for and absolutely deserve. Thank you to Mr. Smith, Mr. Cook, and Ms. Lawson for not wanting to cut what the school board has asked for. More than half, 53%, of With County students are living in poverty, and these students are at a higher risk for cognitive and literacy challenges, both academically and socioeconomically, before they even begin school. Our teachers do all they can to make sure that all the students get the same learning experiences, but teachers need the proper resources to be able to do that. And when you cut school funding, you are telling those students who are already in an educational disadvantage that you don't put their education as a priority. But guess what? 101 other localities in Virginia do. I'm on the Board of Directors for the Virginia Education Association, and I often have contact with student VEA members across the state. And when asked how my county is when it comes to school funding, I have to say, "Well, not so good." And it doesn't look like it's going to get any better. How many of those future teachers do you think want to seek a position in With County after I tell them that? On a different note, Mr. Vaught, I have returned email correspondence between the supervisors from March 1 to April 9. And Mr. Vaught, you stated at the last meeting that the school board had not attempted to contact you about meeting to discuss the budget. But on March 9, Mr. Bayer did send you and Ryan Lawson an email asking if you wanted to set up a meeting with the school board as you had done before. And you replied that you did not see the need unless they had specific items they wanted to discuss. But Ms. Lawson did reply that she would like to discuss the building project plan for Scott, and that the ball might be in the supervisor's court for a meeting. I can't imagine that the school board members or Dr. Jeffries would not have been interested in discussing the school budget, and I just wanted to make that clear. Oh, and Mr. Terry, in your emails, you had stated that Ms. Megan Patrick was an idiot in your correspondence with other supervisors, and I disagree with that assessment.
Thank you, Ms. Davis.
Thank you.
So we have signed up to speak on citizens' time. I'll close citizens' time. Moving on to the agenda, we have the payment of invoices.
Make a motion to pay bills. Second.
Have a motion, have a second. Is there any invoice that any supervisor wants to pull out or discuss? Here and then, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Smith?
Aye.
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 So approved. Next item is our minutes from our previous meeting from August 27, 2021. Make a motion, let it move. Have a motion to approve the minutes. Have a second.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any corrections to the minutes as presented? Here and then, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Terry?
Aye.
Yep.
Aye.
Aye.
So approved. Moving on to old business, first item is the VDOT, the abandonment of Old Ground 11. Mr. Bayer, would you like to summarize that?
Yes, I'm glad to. On March 23 meeting, you all reviewed a letter from Pam Heath regarding that abandonment, and they had indicated that that would be handled through VDOT. Since that time, she has requested that the Board of Supervisors either submit a resolution or a letter of support for the proposed abandonment. As mentioned before, this is in the middle of the farm or property up there, and it serves no public purpose. I would recommend that the board approve the letter on page 59 of your agenda regarding the abandonment of that right of way.
Entertain a motion to approve the letter as presented.
So moved.
Have a motion, have a second.
Second.
Is there any questions or discussion? Here and then, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Smith?
Aye.
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 So approved. Do I have a copy of that, Mr. Bayer?
No, you do not. We'll get one to you.
Next item under old business is the broadband study contract terms.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. The county has solicited four private providers. We got those proposals in last week. If you'll recall, we employed Design 9 out of Blacksburg last year to develop our strategy for how to develop broadband. We'd like to continue that contract with them so that we can get their technical expertise and review of the solicitations that we've received to help guide us in making our decision. We did receive terms from them on continuing this contract. They'll do it under the same terms that we worked under last fall, and we'll do our best to control costs, paying that out of our professional services line item instead of out of CARES funding like we did last fall. Just request your approval and authorization.
Entertain a motion to authorize or authorization to continue using Design 9.
So, second.
Have a motion, have a second. Any questions or discussion? Here and then, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Terry?
Aye.
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 So approved, Mr. Hankins. Thank you. Next item is appointments.
On the agenda, Mr. Chairman, just for the, to keep you all informed of vacancies that we have coming up on June 30th and recent vacancy that we just had.
Does anybody have any suggestions?
Have we received anything? Any emails?
Okay. Ms. Davis, I hate to put you on the spot, but we do have two vacancies on the WCC board if you'd be interested. Withfield Community College. If you are, you can get with Mr. Bayer. There's certain qualifications where it's a state agency, but I just thought by you reviewed.
Of course, you all know of anyone, too.
Or, yeah, if you've got a name you want to throw out there, we're... All right, next is Austinville Sanitary Sewer Project. Mr. Bayer?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. As I think all of you are aware, we have been working on this Austinville Sanitary Sewer Project. We've been working with Buildings and Grounds Committee. At the last meeting, you all approved requesting an extension on the closing date of the above referenced loan and consideration of additional funding for this project. Don Crisp has worked very hard over the last week with our engineers from Mattern and Craig on getting a proposal in line. You have in a hand out there in front of you a letter from Mattern and Craig, and you have a memorandum from Mr. Crisp. To summarize the memorandum, the total that VRA had offered us in funding was the $810,650. We advertised, $607,000 plus of that was a loan, $203,000 plus was principal forgiveness. We advertised for our public hearing for 10% more on the loan in case additional funds were needed and additional funds were available. Basically, using those additional funds from the, from Virginia Department of Health, they will give us that amount. We would be about $1,500 short on the project, which we would propose to pull from reserves. So I request that the board authorize us to request an additional amount of $60,755 in loan funds from DEQ for us to complete this project.
I'll make that motion.
Have a motion, have a second.
Okay.
Have a motion and a second. Any questions or discussion?
What was that, that amount?
Additional $60,755, which is the maximum amount that the DEQ could give us on this project.
Okay, got you.
And that gives us how much in loan?
That would give us $668,313 in loan, $203,092 in principal forgiveness.
Excuse me, any other questions? Here and then, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Smith?
Aye.
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 So approved. Next is the draft secondary six-year plan. Mr. Bayer, I believe you have that.
Yeah, this just adds on the end of the plan, the roads that you all discussed last time. VDOT is advertising for this public hearing, and I'll ask our clerk, just if you will, confirm with VDOT that they do have that ready to go. I met with them last week, and they indicated they would have that advertisement out.
So we, we don't need...
You don't need to take any action on it. Basically, you can see from the additions that are there, it's adding the rest of Gap of the Ridge Road. Let me back up to the very beginning on page five of that report. You've got Connors Valley Road, which is about 1.2 miles. You have Gap of the Ridge Road. Porter Road, Bluebird Road, Poplar Drive, Riverview Road, Edgewood Road, Scenic Trail.
Any discussion?
Did Mr. Bayer, did they ever get back on how far the 1.2 went? I know Mr. Ennis, he had sent me their measurements. Did VDOT ever get back with you?
They did not give me anything. And basically, what they were going to do was put the full amount that was left over after all the roads onto the Connors Valley Road, so they could do as much as it was. And so 1.2 was their estimate.
Thank you.
And, you know, what we can look at in the future is, currently, they've been building some roads under budget and rolling money into future projects, so we may be able to add extensions as more money comes in.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Anyone else? Anything on that, anything else on that, Mr. Bayer?
No, sir, Mr. Chairman, there's not.
Anything else under old business?
I do not have anything else.
All right, moving on to new business, before we get on what's on the agenda, I'll take over. Today, I received a letter, and I'm going to read it for the record. It's addressed to the With County Board of Supervisors. It says, "Dear Board Members, I'm writing this letter to inform you of my retirement as the sheriff of With County. I have faithfully, faithfully served the citizens of With County for 38 years. While struggling with this decision, I realize the importance of spending more time with my family. Therefore, my effective retirement date will be August 1st, 2021. My career has spanned nearly four decades. I've had several major accomplishments during my career, but none make me more proud than protecting our children. Working with the Board of Supervisors and getting a school resource slash security officer in every school to protect our county's number one resource. We now have police vehicles in front of our schools to deter criminal activity. My main goal while serving as sheriff was to protect our children at all cost. Our schools are safer today than they were in the years past. The current climate toward police officers in communities around the country has seen challenging times. The citizens of With County support the With County Sheriff's Office, and this can be attributed to the positive relationships that have been built. To continue these positive relationships, Chief Deputy Charles Foster will be in charge of the office until a special election can be held. While my last day of employment will be August 1st, 2021, if you have any questions, please contact me. Sincerely, we and Keith Dunigan, the sheriff of With County."
So...
Congratulations to the sheriff.
Congratulations to the sheriff. I could go into a lot of details of what kind of man he is, but I think his letter speaks for itself. With that being said, we have to petition the With County Circuit Court to set a special election.
You've got, you've got two options, and Mr. Martin can chime in here. Basically, within 15 days of a vacancy, which you don't have a vacancy now, you shall petition. If you receive a letter, you may petition to go ahead and petition the Circuit Court to set a special election. My recommendation would be that you go ahead and petition him to set the special election, and you set it during the November election. That saves you from having to pay poll workers and everything else in the process. So staff's recommendation from my side would be to petition to establish it during the November election this year.
Yeah, that's right. You have the option to do it immediately, or you can wait until 15 days after the vacancy actually occurs, but it makes sense to do it sooner than later.
Right.
Yeah, just to save time.
Well, and I agree with Mr. Bayer on the having it the same day as the general election, because it's a county office, and we have to open all the polling places and all that. With that being said, does anybody else have anything? I will tell you that the sheriff did not want any fanfare about his retirement, and that's why he called me in, gave me that letter, made me read it. But I think it would be most appropriate if we could give him a resolution for his retirement, and maybe we can trick Tammy into...
Dragging her in.
Taking him out to eat or whatever lie she used to get him here.
Mr. Chairman, I would request that you all make a motion or request in the county attorney to draft a writ of election for, to submit to petition the Circuit Court for the November general election.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion, have a second question, Mr. Martin. Do myself and Ms. Lawson need to abstain, or...
I would advise as such, because of the transaction involving your interests, so I think it should...
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Here and then, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Abstain.
Abstain.
Aye.
So approved. All right, now, new business. Mr. Bayer, first item is our fiscal year 2021-22 budget.
Mr. Chairman, if you don't care, I think we've got some individuals here that may be interested in item B. If you want to go ahead and skip to that first.
Non-emergency transport resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. We do have representatives here from the companies that are requesting to serve as a non-transport, or a non-emergency transport agency in With County. You all can throw things at me if I got any of this wrong, and you're, I think, I believe you'll be able to speak to, address anything that I get wrong. But Abingdon Convalescent Ambulance Service and Shohei Ambulance Service doing business respectively, it's Abingdon Ambulance and Sea Trends, are already here. They've been requested several times to do transports between facilities, particularly when there's no other ambulance service available to do so. And if Mr. McCabe were here tonight, he could tell you that we've had several instances lately where not only have we not had ambulances available for transport, we haven't had sufficient ambulances available for emergency call volume. So it would be useful, I think, for you to consider bringing on additional support so that these folks can provide non-emergency transport and free up resources for transporting cases and emergency situations. So you have a resolution before you, you have to consider this resolution and approve their operation here before they are fully licensed to do so and recognized to do so by the state. They have established a base of operations here on Lee Highway, and staff would recommend that you consider and adopt the resolution authorizing their operation here. And the company is here if you want to hear from them.
I thought they were just starting to like to come to our meetings. And I will, I appreciate y'all, that if you keep coming, you'll hear me say... And I will, I appreciate y'all, that if you keep coming, you'll hear me say, "Moving at the speed of government," unless you got to experience a little bit of that. Is there any questions or discussion on this? Here and now, I'll accept a motion.
I do have a, I'm sorry, I do have a quick question. No, no offense to what you all do, because I appreciate it, but I do have a question from the county's standpoint. Mr. Hankins, I've, and I could be completely wrong, but I've always understood that when we bring in agencies like this, that it takes revenue away from our county rescue, you know, transport. There's a lot more opportunity for our rescue squad to transport if we, obviously, the citizens come first no matter what. But, you know, if we have our county rescue squad available to do a non-emergency transport, then do we not lose quite a bit of revenue by bringing in other agencies?
They could potentially lose revenue, yes, ma'am. But the recent shortage of available crews and the declining participation with some of our agencies would indicate to me that we probably ought to consider. I think that's a valid point. But I think if, if we were able to meet the need, that would be one thing. If we can't meet the need, then it's worthy of your consideration.
That's an issue.
And I think that, and again, y'all correct me if I'm wrong, if they're, they're private business, there wasn't a need, y'all, y'all didn't randomly just pick with them, correct?
Yeah, and like I said, it's no offense to y'all, but I always have to watch out for the county's standpoint first, as we all do, so I have to ask those questions. But I kind of figured that's what was going on, and I didn't have a chance to ask you first.
And I believe there's at least one other private agency that's providing this sort of transportation here. I believe Richardson out of Smith County is doing the same.
Are they still here as well?
Same sort of business. But again, it comes down to having enough ambulances to make those transports when they're necessary.
Okay, absolutely. Thank you.
Is it order or dispatch?
They're actually not dispatched because they're non-emergency, so they don't even have radios that can communicate to our dispatch agencies. So the only way they would respond to an emergency is if they were telephone dispatched. So we would have to actually have dispatch call them and say, "We're out of ambulances. We need help. We've got a wreck on the interstate. Can you, you know, send a truck to help?" And you all, again, can throw something at me if I get this wrong, but if they, they don't have the right licenses to respond to that sort of thing, they wouldn't be able to do that anyway. So if they didn't have a crew that was either basic life support or advanced life support, then they wouldn't be able to respond. And I don't know how you all staff your trucks, whether you have somebody who is ALS and BLS on every shift or, okay. So they would be able to respond as backup in an emergency if Withfield, Lead Mines, and Rural Retreat were all tied up on other calls.
Thank you.
I have one. Back several years ago, there was a, a rescue squad in that area that got in hot water over claiming they were hauling people, that they were hauling in their car or something. This is not a part of that, is it?
No, sir, that's not us.
Okay.
We have.
Just checking.
Any other discussion? I'll entertain a motion to approve the resolution.
So moved.
Have a motion, have a second. Have a motion and a second, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Terry?
Aye.
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 So approved. Officially welcome to With County. All right, Mr. Bear, we'll go back to the fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two budget discussion.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. At our last, you know, we've had several meetings over the last little bit. On our budget, what you have before you is our proposed budget off our last meeting of revenue budget of eighty-five million, four hundred and fifty-six thousand, one hundred and ninety-five dollars. With the school board budget being of that fifty million, three hundred and six thousand, seven hundred and ninety-three thousand. With the funding levels as have been discussed for those. And included with it is our expenditure budget in the same matching amount as our revenue budget for the eighty-five million, four fifty-six, one ninety-five. Obviously, you all still have the ability to change the budget, but we do have to advertise a budget for the public hearing. At your last meeting, you voted to proceed with the public hearing on May twenty-fifth. Recommendation from staff would be for you all to approve the advertisement of the With County budget and the school board budget for May twenty-fifth.
Entertain a motion to approve the advertisement for May the twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-one.
So I have to have one question. This is just for the public hearing part, right?
Yes. Yes. You will, you will adopt it at June eighth meeting or later?
So moved.
Have a motion, have a second.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any other questions or discussion? Here and now, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Smith?
Aye.
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 Wow.
So approved. Anything else under new business, Mr. Bear?
No, sir, Mr. Chairman. That's all.
All right, we'll move on to board reports. First is the Budget Committee.
Budget Committee, met on May the fourth, two thousand twenty-one, makes the following recommendations. Amending and appropriating one hundred dollars to account three-five-zero-three-dash-four-three-zero-one-five-zero for additional medical examiner expenses this fiscal year.
Coming from committee, doesn't need a second. Is there any questions or discussion? Here and now, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Smith?
Aye.
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 So approved.
Amending and appropriating the following amounts to the New River Regional Water Authority budget. Account number one-one-zero-zero-three-dash-three-one-nine-zero-one-nine for the amount of twenty-nine-hundred. Twenty-nine-eighty-five accounts four-four-zero-one-three-dash-four-one-one-one-zero-zero, two-thousand-four-hundred-seventy-three dollars. Account four-four-zero-one-three-dash-four-one-two-one-zero-zero, three hundred dollars. Four-four-zero-one-three-dash-four-two-two-one-zero-zero for the amount of two-twelve.
Coming from committee, doesn't need a second. Is there any questions or discussion on that recommendation?
Mr. Chairman, I will just add, that twenty-nine-hundred-and-eighty-five dollars was a payroll that we had to do back last July for the New River Regional Water Authority, as it all switched over to the town of Withfield to be the fiscal agent for it. We have received those funds back in. We're just amending it into our budget so that we don't show a negative in our budget. No fiscal impact to the county.
Does that elicit any questions or discussion? Here and now, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Terry?
Aye.
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 So approved. Anything else from the Budget Committee?
That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Is that the only committee report we have, Mr. Bear?
Uh, yes, sir, it is.
All right, moving on to Board of Supervisors' time. Mr. Terry?
I don't have anything at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Horny?
Don't believe I have anything at this time, Chairman.
Mr. McCroft?
I don't have anything.
Ms. Lawson?
Nothing at this time.
Mr. Cook?
Nothing at this time.
You're not going to get a no hitter. I'm just saying, you're not going to get a no hitter.
Mr. Smith?
I do, Mr. Chairman.
Imagine that. Giddy with excitement.
Yeah. So I didn't have a resident, a couple residents called me from Route ninety-four. I know that we've talked about this. We actually talked about this last week from the intersection of fifty-two up Ivanhoe Road towards St. Paul PH Church. The speeds, the residents are extremely upset, several near misses as far as accidents, especially in the curves from Mr. Johnson's all down to Jewel Lane. So if we get VDOT to check on that for us. Trash on Chapman Road. I know that we were trying to get the cleanup crew here, but that from Lot Scout up to the trucks, they were pretty rough. So, Mr. Foster, if you can get the cleanup crew, if you can get that on the list, that would be good.
Just to let you know, Mr. Smith, that they are on the top stretch on twenty-one. Do I do it then? And we can pull and brush, I don't know much on that.
Yeah, all right. Appreciate it. Thanks, sir.
Mr. Smith, if I could interrupt you also. I will be attending the jail board meeting Friday, and I will try to see if there's anything that can be done to start getting more of the trustees out and on there.
All right, appreciate it.
And I will say, you know, they, we're getting the skeleton crew a couple days a week, and I was on twenty-one last week, week before, and the skeleton crew was one trustee, and the jail officer was outside the vehicle picking up trash. And while we appreciate that, Superintendent Winston needs to come up with a solution to get us some trustees. You know, the, I know they were using the Johnson-Johnson vaccine because it's a one-dose vaccine, and their population ebbs and flows, and I understand that, and they put that on hold for a while, but it's back if, you know, if he's having trouble getting the vaccines, but, you know, it's, we, we need to see some.
And you would think that some of the individuals that like getting out and then outside the jail would, would be available to do that.
Mr. Bear, on the, the last meeting, two meetings ago, the New River, Jeff Wright spoke about the New River. Do we have any updates on that?
I, the, I met sometime later that week with DWR on a different issue, but talked about that in the process, reviewed with them his concerns, what they have with our river. The initial response from them was they did not think they could do anything as far as no wakes or anything like that, but that they would look into it and see what opportunities they had down there to do that. And then I asked Mr. Kinsler, and I will follow up with him, just to do another follow-up with VDOTs and others on the spray, just to make certain that everything was still kosher on there, which I expect to come back that it's still meeting all the guidelines on it.
The only other thing I have is, just to clarify, Ms. Davis talked about the email. That was not a request to meet with the whole school board. That come from the superintendent of schools, and he wanted myself and Ms. Lawson to meet with their chair and their vice chair. And, and I've told him before, I don't like doing that. I like the whole boards to meet. We're very transparent. Our meetings are on YouTube, minutes are kept, and that was, maybe that didn't come across in my email, but I've told them, they've got an open invitation they have since I've been on the board. Anytime they want to meet as a board, we'll meet. But we do business as a board. We should meet as a board, so, but that's all I have.
Mr. Chairman, I got four more items.
Oh, I thought you were done, Mr. Smith.
I'll just let you go.
So that was like an intermission.
It was. It's not going to cost y'all any extra. We won't charge you. Mr. Bear, Crimson Lane, getting a lot of complaints. There was some repairs done to Crimson Lane along the shoulders of the road.
Okay.
But since that repairs, it's turned all the water in the middle of the road, and it's not getting in the ditch line, so they, they're wanting that addressed. And then South Crest Drive, I know we've talked about this. Did you get any information back on where we are on getting that road on the?
Actually, Mr. Kinsler and Ms. Castle have been working on the revenue sharing plan. Today, I reviewed the numbers from Mr. Kinsler. He's taken VDOT's cost estimates that they're providing on the road, dividing them up as to what it would be if each resident paid that amount, or if we did it by tax district. And so we can get those meetings scheduled to, to see that there is enough interest and support, and they understand the cost factor to do so.
Okay, thank you, sir.
It is in process.
All right, thanks, sir. And then this, the next one, I know that I talked to Mr. Bear about this, but there is another cattle issue on Cartersville Heights Road. There's, apparently, the fences are subpar, and a lot of cattle in people's yards and destroying their, their landscaping and all that. And I know, Mr. Bear, we had talked, and you had Animal Control to go down and that. So just, just to keep that in mind, there's a lot of fence issues going on of that road as well.
Yeah, the, the one section that is, that we can look at is the cattle in the VDOT right-of-way. And I don't know, we could use the sheriff's office and the animal control office to see what assistance we can get on trying to ride on, on those. And then, obviously, if it's division fences between the landowners, that's a separate issue right there. But I think a lot of what we're getting right now is what I'll call fences along right-of-ways. And the, we're limited tools in our toolbox, but the one tool would be riding them for animals at large in the right-of-way.
Thanks, sir. And the last item I got, Mr. Chairman, is, I don't know that there's anything we can do, but I told them I'd bring it up. A lot of residents in Maxmanis is wanting their address changed back to Maxmanis versus Withfield. I know that's more of, I would think, of the postal service than it would be the board, but I've done my duty. I brought it out. That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Just to follow up on your comment, or your comment about the fences. Mr. Bear, you sent out the explanation about the fence in, fence out.
Yes, that Don or Scott put together, yes.
You know, the, the whole time I've been on the board, that is by far the number-one complaint that I've got. I don't know if it's just my area or if everybody, I doubt Ms. Lawson or Mr. Cook's got very many, but is that something that can be put on a referendum?
I have to look into the referendum. I don't know offhand. Another option we could consider, maybe, I was thinking of, you could have a fine for losing your livestock, have a vote for the fire. But I can look into the referendum issue.
Well, and, and my, my thing is, I see both sides of them.
Yeah.
And, you know, if it came up to, you know, to evoke the might, I'd have a hard time. I know we have public hearings, and you have five people for, or five people against, but, I mean, something like that with the amount of complaints that we see. I mean, I'd feel more comfortable if we put on a referendum, let the county as a whole. Because, and if I'm not mistaken, I know it was before my time, but I think you were around, Stephen. Back when they flipped from fence out to, or fence in to fence out, you know, there was a large push by, of course, Farm Bureau and, and other agencies. You know, they had their, what they wanted to see happen, and other people had, you know, I don't know if that's something y'all want to consider, or?
I'm fine with it. I mean, as a farmer, I mean, I think it's kind of a weird law the way we've got it. I mean, if my cattle get out and they go a mile down the road, and then they walk through somebody's front yard, I mean, I can't expect that person to have their front yard fenced off.
Right.
Well, and, and, and I know one of the sticking points when they first discussed it were, was the civil liability if, if a tree falls on your fence and a cow wanders out the road and a car hits it. But people get sued every day. Regardless of whether it's fence in or fence out, there's still some civil liability, correct?
Yes.
I mean, I didn't go to law school with three semesters. But, you know, and, and that was, and I never thought that was, number-one, correct, but that was one of the big sticking points is, you know, that way you won't get sued and, you know, lose everything. That's not, I mean, there's still civil liability there.
And the criminal side of that was part of it as well, that?
And it's nothing, and it is, you know, it's kind of like this no parking ordinance that we passed last year, year before. We don't want to ride anybody because that hundred-dollar fine does very little to fix what that eighty-thousand-pound truck done on the side of that blacktop. It's not about generating revenue or punishing people. It's about quit parking there. You know, and, and I think that's, you know, it was just, when you sent that email out, I went back, and, and I can tell you, pretty much every community, I've got complaints of, you know, I had one little old lady. She said, "I can't," and I shouldn't have called her old, but she was older lady, you know, she- her old, but she was older lady, you know, she said, I, she liked to plant flowers.
Yeah.
And she said, "Every time I plant flowers, my neighbor's cows get out and might eat them." And, you know, I, you know, I don't have much of a heart, but that can bother me.
Well, that's, I had two complaints, and I thought I would send it to everybody because, you know, I, I think it's important to understand, and I, and I, I asked Dawn and them to look at it because I would love to see some middle ground, and I was hoping that maybe from the code, they might find some middle ground, but it, it's, it's not very user-friendly. I mean, you're pretty much rather fence out or fence in, and if, if there's anything in there that could, could split it, you didn't have the criminal liability for, you know, like I said, you don't really want to ride the people if a tree falls across it. I doubt somebody's gonna ride them for that anyway, but the code is not very.
Well, and, and speaking of older persons, Chief Foster, I'm putting you on the spot. How long have you been at the sheriff's office?
Thirty-four years.
You were around back when it was fence in. How many people did you ever ride a ticket to, for their cows getting out?
I agree.
Anyway, see, see what you started.
Hey. Just trying to help the citizens out.
But if you just, I mean, even if we don't do it, we know the answer.
Yeah.
I just, you know. All right. Next item on the agenda is closed session. I'll entertain a motion to go into closed session under two point two dash thirty-seven eleven A one Personnel Review, two point two dash thirty-seven eleven A three Disposition of Real Property, two point two dash thirty-seven eleven A seven Consultation with Legal Counsel, and two point two dash thirty-seven eleven A twenty-nine Discussion of Awarding Public Contract As Permitted by Virginia Code.
Mr. Bear?
I would like to add a couple of things, well, one more item, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to add A five Perspective Industry Project Flow for A one Personnel Review. I would like to put clarification there, that's for County Administration Review for Disposition of Real Property, that is for Progress Park Lot Number One, and the consultation with Legal Counsel and Awarding of a Public Contract is a JIDA Revenue Note and Support Agreement. Just want to make certain that we have justified reasons there.
And if I can add one more, under A seven Fire and Rescue.
You've heard the corrections?
So moved.
Entertain a motion, have a motion, have a second.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're now on closed session. All right, entertain a motion to come out of closed session, have a motion, have a second. Have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're now back in open session. Mr. McRoberts, if you'll read the certification.
Resolution Certification Closed Meeting, or as the Withfield County Board of Supervisors convenes a closed meeting on this date, pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote, and then according to the provisions of Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas, Section two point two thirty-seven twelve of Code of Virginia, occurs certification by the Withfield County Board of Supervisors that such a meeting was conducted in complete with Virginia law. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Withfield County Board of Supervisors hereby certify that to the best of each member's knowledge, for one, only public business matters lawfully exempted of open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification resolution applies, and two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening a closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the Withfield County Board of Supervisors.
Have a motion.
I'd make a motion if we accept that.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any questions or discussion? Here and then, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Aye.
Yep.
Aye.
So approved, and we need entertain a motion to.
Just request a motion to authorize the staff to approve lot one B for S T S that proceeds with curbing of that lot.
Have a motion, have a second.
Second.
Any questions or discussion? Here and then, we'll do a roll call vote with Mr. Terry.
Aye.
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 So approved, and.
Did you hear the note that says you had to step down?
Oh, yeah, going back to closed session, if let the record reflect that Mr. Smith did step out during the discussion of Project Flow due to a potential conflict of interest. Thank you, Ms. Lawson.
You're welcome. I got you.
Motion for a recess?
Oh, I thought we had another, okay. Entertain a motion to recess until Tuesday, May the eighteenth, twenty-twenty-one, at five P M.
So moved.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. We are now in recess.